Thank you. Hello, everybody. We have a hybrid meeting. Some members of the public are attending via Zoom. In terms of members of the zoning commission, I believe we have all our members physically present. With the exception of Bob Powell and Tom. So we are, we have our two alternates seated. Thank you for helping me. Any changes to the agenda, anybody? No? With that, on the minutes of January ninth, twenty twenty-three. On them to be correct. Any corrections? I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll say.
All those in favor? Any discussion, all those in favor? Any names, extensions? Well.
Am I seated?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
In favor?
Yeah. So if that's not an extension?
No.
Okay. Audience, anything anyone would like to bring up to us that is on the agenda tonight?
Carol Briggs, sixty-one Johnson wrote, I had noted with Rich Roberts during a conversation that the February thirteenth meeting as a regular meeting is being proposed for a state holiday. And as such, I realize it says it can be moved to the next business day. I would request that if you move to the next regular meeting of the public hearing that was scheduled for that date, you move to the next regular meeting as it is a state holiday. It's a school vacation week. I believe there are going to be a number of people absent. And it would be much appreciated if it were moved to the next meeting. I realize there's the sixty-day limit. However, I would hope that the applicant here might be willing to allow his client to consent to that additional time.
John, with regard to that, so we, just so everybody knows, because the thirteenth is a state holiday when that next public hearing was proposed, we couldn't hold a regular meeting that day, but we could hold a special meeting. And so I let our town planner know that we should change this to becoming a special meeting on that that day. What's the commission preference? I appreciate you bringing this up. Would you like to continue to have the meeting on that day? That day, but it has to be as a special meeting, or would you like to request the applicant? When would, when would the next regular meeting be?
I think it would be the twenty-seventh.
Yes, it's the twenty-seventh.
Would it put us in a bind as far as timing goes?
It's an extension that I didn't probably wasn't aiming at initially, but as far as a bind, we would need an extension. Mr. Powell is now present at the meeting, so, Don, I see that you left, so I'm going to unseat you and make note that Bob Powell is at the meeting.
Is he iPad?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Hi, iPad.
Hi, Bob. That's Florida.
Hi, Rick. Thank you. It's about fifty-five degrees, so a little chilly tonight.
We have no sympathy.
It's snowing here.
Oh, goodness.
Well, thanks. Thank you. Thank you for arranging the hybrid meeting. I appreciate it.
I think sticking with a hybrid format from this point going forward is probably the most appropriate way to do it. You know, I just, I like the dynamic of having everybody in the room, but it's, it's, I think we've gone down a path that.
Very snowy.
Yeah, that's snowy, but a hybrid, hybrid meeting format for all meetings going forward for the time being, I'm gonna stick on that path unless anyone wants to bring it up and discuss it.
But the thirteenth, I believe, is the end of the initial sixty-five day period for the hearings. So if we extended it, then the twenty-seventh would easily be within that.
Okay. I would propose to the applicant whose representative is in the audience, would that be acceptable to extend it, or would you, what's your perspective on that?
This is the first I've heard of it, so I haven't had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Glod or or Mr. Gates, but it would not be our intention to make the committee meet on a holiday and assuming that that Mr. Glod and others would be available on that evening. I did have a judgment. I don't know whether I can get in touch with them. I'm willing to try it, but I would say the default clause would be that we're not objective there.
Well, let's handle it from a legal standpoint. Let's handle it this way. As of this, the end of this meeting, we're still on for that, being continued to a special meeting. But if you can grant us an extension, then by consensus, we'll just extend it to our next regular meeting.
Yeah, I'm happy to check with him now.
Are we on solid legal ground? Our town attorney's here, Mr.
So I'm happy to check. I'll check tonight and see what I can read somebody who's not.
So.
I'm happy that corresponded in writing within the next day or two.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I would anticipate that they would be.
Yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot to.
I just don't know what people's schedules are.
Okay.
But once I, and if the twenty-seventh doesn't work, you know, we can talk about another extension, I guess.
Okay.
We will work it out, I'm sure.
Okay, so we'll stay on top of, on our end, so that we'll assume that we're having a meeting the thirteenth until we come up with a different plan. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I will keep the commission posted.
So I did take some, just to talk to the commission about that, so I did take some initiative to convert it to a special meeting. Not having any other any other perspective at the time. So we'll try and do everything in a way that works for everybody. Unfinished business. This would be moving into public hearing mode for item six point one is unfinished business.
But we usually number it with public hearing and then unfinished business, but John and I thought that it could be less busy this way.
That's fine. So we're going to move into a public hearing mode. We have two public hearings tonight. One on a zoning amendment to revise section eight point one five. And then we have a second public hearing on a separate public hearing for a zoning amendment application to repeal section fifty-two point seven point five in parts of sections nine, twenty-one point two point three, and sixty-two point five. So we're going to go into the public hearing, I mean, zoning amendment application to revise section eight point one five. John, would you like to speak to that at all, or would you like me to speak to it?
To the substance of the amendment?
Yes. It's, you know, this was proposed before you were our town planner.
Right.
So I'm not sure how much information you might want to present on this, on the zoning amendment change.
So, no, sure, I can, I can just review if you'd like, and let me put this on the screen so everyone can see what we're doing here. Can, can that be seen?
Yes. We can see it.
So there's, there's just a couple of, a couple of minor changes in order to facilitate a slightly easier permit path. And someone's online muted, is unmuted. If you could, if you are online, could you mute yourself? Thank you. So a couple of very, very minor changes to facilitate the inclusion of more solar projects. The first being in section eight point one five relative to solar panels at the roof. The original regulation from twenty-fourteen had a permit process through the zoning enforcement officer for roof-mounted, even though that is not a footprint change and is not a change to the land. And so that is being proposed for correction, removing the zoning enforcement officer as the approving entity, but instead the building official, who is, because it's going on top of the building, that's a more appropriate permit path. And then later on in section eight point one five point D, to clarify that ground-mounted solar panels can be a primary or a secondary use in any district via a special permit, which we had a sort of a snag that if you had a, a different use, you know, a residential use, a farm use, a commercial use, solar panels were only allowed as a primary use, not as a, as a, an accessory use. And so this is clarifying that that can also be accessory use, or secondary use, I should say, just to allow more proliferation of solar panels where appropriate. And again, by special exception, special permit. So relatively minor changes.
Yeah, this, so all this stemmed from the fact that there may have been some question as to whether we need to make, make that second modification. But it does make it very clear about an authority to put a larger solar array on a residential property when situations are appropriate by special permit and approved by special permit. So that being said, any discussion or questions from the commission on this? Okay, I'm not open up to the public. Yes?
Hi, Carol Briggs, sixty-one Johnson wrote, just a few things, eight point fifteen D to permit a solar farm. This isn't a farm. This is a solar array. Farms grow things. So those of us who work in the solar and the Adwill don't like to call these solar farms, because that's not what they are. So they use the term correctly before solar array, and I really should say that. Something that I read this, and when I do my work in the solar area, the approvals at the citing council level, which are the two megawatt or larger, they refer to commercial or non-commercial use, because they're looking at whether or not the solar array is there for a profit generating motive, or is there generate electricity equivalent, equivalent to what the property owner is using. Up until now, residential and commercial could only do up to what they were generating for, or for what they need for. So and they still call the commercial is, is, is if you're creating a solar array to sell back to the grid, and you're not generating it to have a meter spin backwards. So I just, I was just asking the question slash comment that using a phrase primary or secondary doesn't clarify whether they're putting it up to generate electricity, to sell back to the grid, to offset their own electric bill, or they're putting in a for-profit solar panel system. And those are two very different things. And it would seem to me that if they're putting in a system that is below, I think two megawatts is where the setting hustle kicks in. So it's hundred? Two. Because it might even be, whatever it is, it seems to me anything under what the citing council regulates, that you folks have the authority to regulate, and if it's a commercial activity, there are other things associated with that, and you may want to be regulating that a little more tighter than just referring to it as a secondary use, because that could still be a very commercial activity and have implications for the, for the neighborhood that it's being put in. So I simply offer that because it's not clear that you're referring to commercial use or, or non-commercial generation. And those are two very different. I have just the non-commercial for my house, and I sell it back to the grid, and, you know, I'm hoping, hoping my nine dollar and twenty-five cent bill every month will be all I ever pay. But I'm not making money on the system, and that's, that's a different world. And if I had a whole solar array in the backyard that I was selling back to the grid commercially, it'd be, I think, a different matter for the commission to want to consider. So I just offer that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
One, one comment.
Carol.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carol Williamson called on one. I'm wondering if you're referring to a residential area of putting in a solar, a large solar array to sell back to the grid. Is that what this regulation is? I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't read it.
I think the idea here is that our, our regulations don't reference the size of a solar array in any way, or the intended use of it.
Okay.
They very simply identify that a solar array, if there's an existing use on the property, our, our town, former town planner and our zoning enforcement agent felt that, and correct me if I'm not summarizing this correctly, felt that something underneath the citing council regulation that would clearly be within the realm of our purview would need to be considered a secondary use if it was larger than what was typically used to just service a house. So that being said, we didn't think there was a need for a zoning regulation change, but to make, make, and the concept of a larger than a typical single residential solar array being cited on a, on a residential parcel, having this language would make it much more comfortable for somebody who is proposing a little larger solar array on a property. I hope that explains it.
Yeah, what I, I can see having a large quote-unquote solar farm, if you want to go that way.
Network array.
Okay, large array in a, a commercial or on an agricultural piece of land that you could do, use, would be a good thing. Anything that'd get pollution out of the air at this point and kind of preserve our environment is a good thing. I'm not so, I'm not so sure that doing it in a residential area, I don't know that the lines would even hold. Yeah, Northeast Utilities does not seem to be investing in enough power lines to be able to transport it anywhere, except possibly in the neighborhood. I'm just, I'm not sure exactly if this refers to a commercial area in that, or if it refers to a residential area in this district. Any, oh, any district.
Okay, so you could end up with that, you know, fifty families.
Just, if you could just direct any comments to the commission, please.
Oh, you're a town. All right.
Sure. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I mean, I hadn't planned to butt in, but I figured since I'm here. The, the reference to the solar farm isn't part of the regulation. It's just part of the explanation of what fifteen D was being amended to do. And I think the, the sole purpose of adding or secondary is so that if, for example, you have a ten-acre parcel with a house on it, and you want to put solar panels in the back, you could have those solar panels as a secondary use on property without having to tear down the house to be primary or principal use on property. It's kind of splitting technical planning and zoning errors rather than changing the nature of what you're regulating, because basically regulating anything that's below what the citing council regulates.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes? So just identified.
Carol Briggs, so going to Rich's comment, I understand if people are putting up solar arrays to provide the equivalent electricity that they consume for their own residence, especially given battery storage systems, electric vehicles, that type of thing. But to basically be allowing a commercial activity, again, in a residential area, which is what this would do, because you can put an awful lot of panels in a, in a, a link, two acres for your ten, an acre for the house, in an eight acre area. And that's not, that's not necessarily what all the neighbors want to be looking at, is a host of solar panels plopped down in the middle of a residential area. So you also have the issues that, that anything over any decent size requires higher transmission lines and access rights and all that kind of good stuff. So referring to them as primary or secondary rather than referring to them as commercial or non-commercial to me is a misnomer. Secondary is still in allowing the commercial activity in a residential area. And we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be creeping into that. The idea is it's a residential, we have RA zones, and it's rural agricultural. And there are, are permissions that can be granted on the agricultural side, but I venture that most people here wouldn't have thought that you could put a commercial solar panel array on a residential real area, and that's what this would allow up to two megawatt. And I, I don't think that's what people are expecting.
Yeah, I suggest that special permit process precludes plopping.
A large array would require completely changing the service entrance to the property or a separate service entrance. So I think that's a way out of, if you have to have a separate service entrance.
Well, okay. I think under eight point one five, part D is ground mounted or pole mounted solar panels as a primary, or in this case, if changed to, and for secondary use in any district, maybe approved by special permit in accordance with section fifty-two. So if, if it has to go through a special permitting process, wouldn't that hash out some of these concerns?
It might prevent the plopping.
Right. So there's a mechanism, as I understand it, for that.
I guess my point is, is that if you had fifty thousand kilowatts out in that field, it's not going to come back into your house to your circuit breaker panel. The circuit breaker panel could just not handle it. It would have to be totally separate. And I think that's how you can delineate between the two usages.
I think the mindset from the, the commission's perspective was that the citing council can pretty much permit whatever they want, wherever they want, and that it's given that this largely.
The state correct.
Yes. And, and they do hold public hearing solo. That's a different level of process than what we do at the local level. So that, given that large solar arrays do occur, especially in agricultural areas, how do we take that slightly smaller than what they would regulate activity and then put some reasonable ways to allow it to happen if it isn't quite within the realm of their purview? And that's what the original intention of our, our regulation was. And then there was this perceived concern about the technicality of primary versus secondary, which I didn't think we need to clarify. But in the spirit of making it absolutely crystal clear, we, we decided to propose an amendment to make that clear. Commission in general seemed very supportive at the time of, of the concept of this, of, you know, proposed solar array in, in an agricultural, residential agricultural area, given the special permit process. And it was the recommendation that we put this language in place so that it was no question as to whether or not it could be put there based on the fact it was a secondary or primary use of, use of the property. So the idea being that the commission seemed to be open to it, and that this was just a clarifying regulation to clarify what we already seem to be in favor of, of considering. So.
Our town planner has had his stand up for a while.
Okay. John?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Jiskowski. Yeah, I did want to echo Attorney Roberts's comment that I'll acknowledge and that the use of the word solar farm was just an explanation and was a bit of a clumsy one. I'm not a big fan of that term either. But it does not appear, the, the term solar farm does not appear anywhere in the regulations themselves, either existing or proposed. And the other thing I would note is relative to Ms. Briggs's comments about people's motive, I would just caution, or the people's profit motives, I would just caution the commission that this isn't a, a, you know, land intentions board, you are a land use board, and, and people's intentions should really not enter in, should be really looking at the effects of the land, and, and which is why the special permit process, as you say, Mr. Chairman, will hopefully avoid plopping.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Yes?
Carol Briggs, I do want to respond to John's comment about motives. Well, that's exactly what zoning does do. It, it does speak to what activities are permitted in different zones, and commercial activities aren't allowed in a rural agricultural zone, except by special permit. And in this case, the, you know, I don't think anybody wants to see a whole array of solar panels up by Columbia Lake. I don't think anybody wants to see a whole array of solar panels for commercial purposes, anywhere except in, in an appropriate commercial or, and in some cases agricultural, that, that's being dealt with by the citing council, because they've got protections in place for preserving special features of the state. But this allows it to happen, basically. And I, and I do have a concern, because section B speaks to that the maximum lot coverage requirement has to be met. Question is, does D negate that by saying ground-mounted and pole-mounted solar panels as a primary or secondary use in any district may be approved by special permit? Does that mean that the maximum lot coverage under B can be waived?
No. You can't waive zoning regulations. You can vary them through the CBA, but you cannot waive zoning regulations.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, unless the special permit allows you to do that. That's what I'm concerned about.
It does not.
The, the legal authority to exempt somebody from our regulations, would you have to comply with them? Okay. Anything else? Any more discussion on this? Would you like to?
I have just a comment. It doesn't really necessarily pertain to the changes they're making in the regulation. I was very much surprised to find a solar array farm, whatever it's from, you might use behind a piece of property that I owned that I was never made aware of, just because it's underneath the size. So if it's underneath that size, I don't know, well, said under, under the, I don't know what the, not what the technology, you know.
Two meg.
Right. It was under, just under the two mags. So there wasn't any permit required. There wasn't any notification of adjoining properties. We share a driveway with this particular parcel, and I was not made aware of anything. So I was really surprised that something would just pop up that didn't require any special, it didn't require a special permit, didn't require any type of permit, didn't require anything, didn't require any notification from neighbors.
This is Columbia here?
Yes.
It might ask where, because I don't know of any two-meg or anywhere near a two-meg system in Columbia.
Well, maybe it's not near a two-meg. I know it's back there.
What, you know, what it's, what it's for? Is it, is it an accessory?
It's just for solar. It's on a vacant piece of property. So it's not, I guess, at that point, it would be the primary use, but.
If you have some concerns about something specific, you might want to check with Connie?
I, I have, and I was doing, and that's.
What specifically did she come up with?
She came up with is because it was under that two-meg, that nobody had to apply for anything. That it was just automatic right of the property. And I'm just bringing it up, because that's what I was told when I questioned it. And I didn't know if anybody else was aware of that that could be done, and all of a sudden just be a total surprise, and have other people not be able to question where even, you know, tapping to them. So it's not really pertinent to this, but I just wanted to bring it up, that that is something that did happen. I did question it, and I was told it was a right to, to, under the land rights, that they were entitled to do so, and that in that particular case, I was told that state has to. So.
There's no such thing.
That's what's, that's what's back there.
That's gotta be a municipal.
Looking to this at a different time.
Yeah, I was trying to make other people aware of the fact that, you know, if, if it could happen to me, knowing so much about regulations and the amount of time that I spend at the town and in the town hall and stuff, that, that maybe could happen to someone else. That's the only reason I was bringing that up.
I don't think the state would factor in unless it was three megawatts or more.
That's, that's the difference here. The way that it works is that if, if you apply for a system and it's three mags, it falls under the citing council. That means.
it falls under the siding council. That means that the town literally, I would say, has nothing to say about it, but it falls under a different jurisdiction. If it's below three migs, but not an accessory to a dwelling. So there's a big threshold. Because our regs talk about accessory and and such. So the that that gap between accessory and that three meg threshold, that three meg siding council limit is where the town weighs in. And our regulations give no permission for that. So the system you're talking about has to fall under either municipal, which means it is supporting a town building.
Yeah.
Um, it's not a commercial system because our regulations wouldn't have permitted it.
Well, it's not necess, I don't believe it to be a necessarily commercial system.
Then it has to be, it has to be addressed appropriately well.
Because I don't think that this is related to this.
My sister makes a few people are just trying to make you make aware that.
Public hearings tonight and I'd like to stay on topic. This public hearing. And if you have something you'd like us to address, I'd be happy to address it. And and we can bring it up if you think that.
Just bringing something.
Help to come forward with more facts that were very accurate. If you think that something was done not in in harmony with the regulations or it would help to have an explanation of what you understood the regulations to be and what the underlying facts were, but to have generalities brought into the meeting about this, unless it's very directly related to this.
I retract the whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there any, would anyone like to bring up? Are you ready to close the public hearing on this? Amendment, the regulation change. I make a motion and we close this public hearing outside. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? All right. But that's right. Okay. Okay, all those in, that's in this except for Walt Tabor is abstaining.
Oh, hell.
Bob? Okay, he voted in favor of closing the public hearing. So what we'll do is we're going to move on to our next public hearing and then we'll consider the these topics tonight.
Excuse me, I didn't, it might be an opportunity to make a mark for the record, Mark, for a while. To make a couple phone calls and the twenty-seventh would be the date that would be available and that the applicant, which was the big time. So so you would consent to, okay.
Then what we'll do is we will extend this short of making a modification to our agenda. I think we can do this under commission open discussion. That be an appropriate way to handle this?
Yeah, for the for the public hearing.
Yeah, for sending the public hearing to the twenty-seventh.
Um, why don't you cover that? I would, I would because that's not on this agenda. I would add a business item later on in the agenda. Let's, I would, I would focus on the 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 public hearings at hand.
Okay.
I maybe maybe adding unfinished business item six point three after your two public hearings.
Okay, let me make a motion to add that as an agenda item. And as agenda item six point three under unfinished business. The issue of the public hearing for the application seventy-nine Cards Mill Road. I'll make that motion to add that agenda item. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Tabor, that's the end of the state. Okay. Next up is Carol Briggs and others, zoning amendment application to repeal section where fifty-two point seven point five event wedding venue facilities in parts of sections nine, twenty-one point two point three and sixty-two point five. We'll open the public hearing and the applicant, I'll have the applicant speak to that proposed regulation change.
Carol Briggs, sixty-one Johnson Road, and I'm speaking on behalf of a group of people who submitted the amendment application to change the zoning regulations. We did it to have a public hearing on this on November fourteenth. And I would ask that the minutes of that public hearing be incorporated into this public hearing. Specifically pages three and four of those minutes.
Can I do that?
Yeah, I think it's the same public here.
Or any?
No, that didn't.
Mr. Roberts?
We were told it didn't count, so we had to do this all over again.
Okay.
I thought it was continued.
No, it's not continued.
Well, there were, I think there's two things going on here. We had had a public hearing on a similar application back in April and
Right.
that was denied. Then Carol Briggs and others resubmitted the application and we held a public hearing on that.
But the notice was in and out.
That one, yes, we we failed to notify the capital regional council of government in time. So that is why the this public hearing was rescheduled for tonight. Those are the minutes that are being requested.
Well, the meeting had never had to happen.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why Paula's not here.
She had said.
But I told her that we should just continue that public hearing until after the notice had been given, which is why I thought.
So this is now technically a new public hearing. This is a continuation of that public hearing.
I mean, they're requesting an extension, so I think it is.
That's okay. Paula told me put in everything again. So that's why I was going ahead and doing that. But if you're telling me it's a continuation and it's already in, that's fine. But that's, we were all under the impression from Paula's email, we needed to put it all in again.
So could we then consider the minutes to be among the material that the applicant is presenting?
That's what I'm requesting.
As part of this application?
Because I'm not sure this was posted.
Question is, is this actually then a a new application based on a new timeline or is it just an extension of that original application and we didn't notice appropriately?
It sounds like it's. Here, the new public hearing on the same application. So
Okay.
You know, either way, it's fine to go back on November fourteenth then because it was the single application.
And I would ask, Josh, I would ask that you reissue those minutes back out to the members in their packet as we go forward.
So it sounds like then you will not be making a decision on this tonight?
I would think not. Just for the sake of of being thorough about including information. Because we don't have it at hand to distribute to the members of the commission.
Right.
I'd rather just take our time and and do it. Is everyone in agreement with that approach? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think that makes, I just want to be careful to to not to to keep get, keep all information properly presented.
I don't disagree with my master question because there's the Cars Mill wedding venue that we're also moving to the twenty-seventh one. Does the two things?
That application was submitted prior to that.
So any extension to this is not going to overlap?
Yeah, if if we were to, let's say we were to adopt the proposal to eliminate what the application was put in place, the other application was put in place when those regulations existed. So it's just that 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 is the way we would approach it. So it what what's critical is what the the rules are at the time you submit an application by. Okay, so yes, we'll do that. But I would strongly strongly suggest that we won't close the public hearing this evening. And and I rarely close. But.
I think you can close it until we get all of the.
Yeah. Stop. We could, but it wouldn't be prudent and I don't, you know, we've approved. And so, yes, thank you.
Okay. So we have requested the change to the regulations to eliminate the special permit provisions related to wedding and event halls that were created in twenty twenty-two. Um, excuse me, twenty twenty-one. Sorry, years are flying.
For the wedding and event facility, I think, is what the regulation references, or is it hall? Venue facilities, venue.
Facility, thank you. Yep. And the reason we want this reg amendment is we believe that it would be very consistent with the requirements under Connecticut General Statute A two that say reg amendments have to meet the following conditions, that they be adopted. Anything being adopted that it be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan and in consideration of the plan of conservation and development. That it be designed to lessen congestion on the streets, secure safety from fire, panic, flood and other dangers, promote health and general welfare, provide adequate light and air, protect the state's historic tribal cultural and environmental resources, facilitate adequate provision for transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks and other public requirements. Consider the impact of permitted land use on contiguous municipalities and on the planning region. And address significant disparities in housing needs, promote efficient review of proposals. And be drafted with reasonable consideration as to physical site characteristics of the district and peculiar suitability for particular uses and with a view to encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the municipality. Based on those requirements, we believe that eliminating the presence or the potential presence of of wedding and event facilities in residential RA districts within the town would absolutely enhance every one of those requirements for reg amendments as stated in the statute. It would lessen congestion. It would be much safer for people. It would promote health and general welfare by providing less noise and less risk of of dangerous drivers on the roads. It is certainly more compatible with the plan of conservation and development, which promotes harmonious use of parcels within a district rather than carving out particular parcels within residential district for commercial use. The plan of conservation and development in a number of places specifically lays out what the commercial districts are. It 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 attempts to make, it makes recommendations on how to enhance those, how to improve those. It doesn't talk about how to get around them and put commercial activities in residential areas. And by adopting this regulation, we would be going in accordance with the plan of conservation and development. It would certainly promote property values, high property values in the area by having consistent property uses within the district, which is very favorably looked upon by appraisers and as well as people who are looking to move into the area. They want to know that when they buy their house, that somebody's not, and it's in in residential RA zone, that it's not going to have a commercial use put in next to it. So for all those reasons, as well as the the many reasons stated in the minutes, because I don't want to make people through that all again, if I can avoid it. I believe that our reg amendment as proposed is something beneficial to the town. I know there was discussion at the last, end of last public hearing, that wasn't a public hearing, about possibly amending them. And if that is something that the commission might think they would do, I would request that you repeal these and start over then. And let the public have full say on what you're trying to do, rather than piecing up these. As we've seen from other public hearings, there are real issues with what's, with how these are being used and the and the shortcomings in them. So my request would be that you repeal them. And if you really want something like this and you think it's appropriate, start over and let the public have input. These got put through in twenty twenty-one and I realize you properly noticed it, but most of the public were not aware of it at all. And I think if you wanted to have really good input on something, that repealing it and starting from scratch is a better avenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to comment? Yes?
Carol Williamson, both on the road. I've been volunteering on these town commissions and boards for, it's nineteen eighty-nine. When I bought my property here, I bought it in an RA zone. And I never in a million years thought that they would adopt a regulation that would allow commercial venue in an RA zone. I realize that you want to increase tax revenue to the town and have more commercial, but we have a commercial zone. And to do this to me is sacrilegious to what people come to Columbia for. And it's the residential character of the town. I have been on I've been part of surveys where it's gone out to the town. And I would say ninety-five percent of the people want to live in a rural community and want to have that rural character. A rural community does not have commercial venues sprinkled throughout its RA zone. That's what this regulation you adopted allows for. I would say that you really need, we need to adopt this new amendment to eliminate that possibility. Nobody wants a commercial property next to them or down the street from them with the noise, the traffic and all that goes with a commercial property. We have a commercial zone. That's what it should be used for. And this regulation will put us back to being, having an RA zone and having commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this?
I see Heather and Joe Connors with their hand up.
Okay, who are, are you going to pick who is first? Well, there.
Oh, there, there's one, so.
Yes. Could you identify, identify yourself for the record, please?
Heather Connors, eighty-two Cards Mill Road, Columbia. We're just wanted to speak in support of repealing this variance. Like other people have said, like, we just feel strongly that commercial properties and commercial buildings and businesses should be done in commercial areas. We purchased our home in February of twenty twenty-one and we would not have done so if we thought that a commercial business would be built across the street from our house. So we just want to say that we support repealing this and if, you know, the commission does feel like they need to add some additional regulations to support other types of businesses in agricultural areas that we wouldn't necessarily be opposed to that, but we don't think that they should be in residential areas.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see. How is iPad? Yeah, next up, do you have to unmute?
I tried to ask to unmute for Donna's iPad there.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Mike McGoldy and Donna Mitchum McGoldy from thirty-three Gallon Road. So we are also in support of of the same points that Carol Briggs has already presented and what others have have mentioned. When we look at what is currently in place, it does not appear to follow the outline, the law of Connecticut General Statute eight point two in the section eight dash two three. When you look at the various points that were raised, what is currently in place actually seems to be in violation of Connecticut General Statute, of a Connecticut law that was created and passed, which should be the driving force behind these types of things. So again, if we look at parts of the comprehensive plan and consideration of plan of conservation and development under eight point two three, designed to lessen congestion in streets, what is currently in place will increase traffic and congestion, not decrease it. Security from fire, panic, flood and other dangers. This will actually increase the potential for that by allowing commercial activities in residential areas with increased traffic, increased potential for accidents, increased use of town resources, emergency response, fire trucks, police trucks, accidents, ambulances. It actually puts more people on the road, which is more potential for dangerous outcomes, which again, is in complete opposition to what the point of this of this section B would be. Promote health and the general welfare. Again, same point. This is actually creating a situation where health and general welfare would be at risk. And again, putting in commerce. again, putting a commercial area, commercial venture in a residential area will, will impact and promote the opposite of what's intended by the statute. Providing adequate light and air, same issue, does not, does not achieve that, does not help preserve environmental resources. You know, when you go through these, the Connecticut General Statute, it is clear, the criteria that are supposed to be weighed, and this appears to, the amendment would put this back in line with the Connecticut General Statute as it stands now.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, but a point of clarification, you keep referring to Connecticut General Statutes. Are you referring to our zoning regulations or are you referring to Connecticut General Statutes? And if you are referring to Connecticut General Statutes, I know that I don't think a single member, person in this room is familiar off the top of their head with specific references to Connecticut General Statutes unless there's a little more information. I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify.
He's referring to what I testified to. I read you eight dash two of the Connecticut General Statutes. That is what I was quoting from, which is what I said at the beginning of my testimony.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, I'm sorry. Please, please continue.
No, that's okay. So again, I think the proposed amendment would be to put thing would be in line with following this Connecticut General Statute and the very criteria that define it. And so that is what, why I am in support of this reg amendment and making it more consistent with what the law requires. And I think we need to keep in mind, it is the law that is driving this and sets forth the criteria. And we need to look at each item and in what way would this change that has been made and what way would it actually support or achieve that. And it does not appear to, it appears to do the opposite on most of the points that are outlined. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is something that just says iPhone. Could you identify yourself, please?
Yep, Bob Burns, ninety-three Johnson Road. I just want to say that I also support Carol and the rest of the community for the amendment. You know, residential areas deserve to be residential areas. We don't want to have to deal with commercial properties coming into residential areas. You know, I bought my house for the quiet neighborhood, not to live next to commercial areas. If I wanted to do that, I'd live in a city. I'd live in a commercial zone. There's areas for it, and it's not in a residential area. I've said it multiple times. I just hope that the commission takes all this into consideration and hopefully looks at appealing the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
Great, thirty-nine Gollum Road. I as well approve this amendment and the commission. Here's the feedback as well. That's kind of what my next point is. You know, we're all here, you know, talking about this, arguing this for a while. And we look to the commission members to represent the public. And we are here, we've been here, and we just really hope our feedback is received by you guys. You'll probably hear some arguments why you should deny this amendment. You're probably not a resident of this town. So I really hope you guys are our kind of line of defense, and we're looking to you guys to, you know, represent the public. The last point is, when making these amendments, I hope there's a consideration to benefit the town. This one, a lot of the criteria seem very arbitrary to me and doesn't benefit hardly, very select few people in this town. It's what, twenty-plus acres. I tried to do some quick, you know, searching of Columbia, who actually could even apply for this application. You know, most people aren't even able to, you know, be involved in this amendment. So I don't, the original one that we look to repeal. So it, it's not a benefit to the community. And I hope you hear our feedback and approve Carol's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak to this? Yes.
Just ahead of me, but. Just for the record, my name is Mark Boulard. I live in Woodstock, by the way. I'm not a resident of Columbia, but I represent Big House LLC and Mr. Craig Gates, who is a property owner in Columbia, a significant property owner, and certainly he's entitled to having me speak a few minutes on his behalf. And I intend to, if you've heard, you've heard plenty of comments over many public hearings on this. And so I'll try to address some of the issues tonight. In looking back, I did look at the minutes back when this was enacted in August twenty twenty-one. It was clear to me that this commission was careful in drafting an amendment, an amendment to your regulations that took into consideration the plan of development in that the plan of development in any number of places encourages development that's compatible with rural character. The, the regulations that you have enacted here do that. Okay, you have made it so that any applicant who wants to have an event, wedding center, has to comply pretty strictly with your regulations. So that there can't be excessive noise. It can't be loud music that can be heard by the neighbors. There can't be excessive traffic. There has to be traffic studies. There has to be sound studies. There has to be environmental studies. So this is not something that can be plopped down in the neighborhood that's going to disturb the neighbors. And I'm not talking about any particular project at this point. I'm talking about your regulations which apply to the whole town. So I think that, I would note that the, the regulation passed by a six-to-one vote of this commission, that the, that I find that your notice of, of your meetings, your public hearings, your minutes, they're available, they're online, easily accessible. One of the better ones that I've seen in the, in the various towns that I've up here before. Nobody took an appeal from that August twenty twenty-one decision. They had ample opportunity to do so. Less than six months later, there's a petition to repeal that. Again, we had at least two public hearings on that. People had their input on it. There's considerable discussion amongst the committee, and this commission denied that application. Now we're back essentially for the third time and a little bit over a year or a year and a half to deal with this same regulation again. The, the commission, quite frankly, wouldn't have to take this application up twice in a year, but you have, and that's fine. But I think this application or petition should be denied, just as the last one. There's nothing that's really changed. There's been no evidence, okay, that's been put before this commission on any of the hearings that dealt with the appeal of this that would support the opinions. While I respect the opinions of the townspeople of Columbia, those are opinions. And then there's been no expert opinion that would indicate that this regulation does what its proponents of this petition claimed it does. Just briefly, in your plan of development, the overall plan is, is to encourage development that is compatible with the rural character. I think the regulations that you have enacted and are in place ensure that. For instance, the limitation on the number of people that attend, the number of events. If, for instance, we assume that an event's going to have a hundred and sixty people, and it's only going to be twelve events in a year, okay, you're talking fifty to seventy hours in the course of a full year, in which there would be people attending. So is it a commercial activity? Yes, because people paid to use it, and people come and attend what I guess would be broadly defined as a commercial activity. But it's certainly a commercial activity that's not going to impact the rural town, the town of Columbia. The plan of development also says you must balance conservation with development, and I think this, this section does that. And some of the surveys that you take, in twenty, over twenty-eight percent, over twenty-eight percent of your residents express concern because of the high taxes and the lack of commercial tactics. And a business such as an event center, done in accordance with your regulations, and one that you approved because there was compliance with your regulations, would benefit the town. It uses very little of town services, and we could keep the money in the local con. So I certainly understand that some people would be opposed to this. It seems to be, the opposition seems to be coming from one particular area of town. As you know, this regulation applies to the whole town of Columbia. So it shouldn't fall on the basis of one particular application. Does this benefit the whole town? Is it in conformity with your plan of development? Did you do an excellent job in, in doing the regulations after you had input from your professional staff and just commission members? A few of back in the minutes, everybody had lots of comments. In fact, there was some concern, a fair amount of concern, that the scope was too little. Okay. So I think that you struck the right balance. I think you've done an excellent job. There was no reason to appeal this in the spring of twenty twenty-two. There's no reason to repeal this in the winter of twenty twenty-three. Not just knowing that was that. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, that said, let's start. Yes.
Carol Williamson, twelve Gollum Road. I think the reason you don't hear other people in town coming to speak against this or in favor of repealing your amendment is because it's not in their backyard. If there was a proposed commercial endeavor, wedding, event thing, in their backyard, they would be here. It's, it's as simple as that. That's why people aren't outraged. They don't have to worry about it's over there. But it opens the possibility that it could be in your backyard. I also pointed toward, you've been talking with the board clerk. I've been on a lot of boards and commissions. I have never received input from the board clerk. They're there to, to record the minutes and work the logistics. And he's not a member of the board, so I'm wondering why you're consulting him on board matters.
An administrative clarification. And he functions in an administrative role and does a wonderful job. So I think it's our prerogative, or mine and any other member of the commission, to utilize our staff to the fullest extent so we can serve the public best.
Okay, I've just never seen it happen. This is almost four years of being on boards and commissions.
Yes.
I just, I just have one comment to follow up from what Mark was saying earlier.
Just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carol Briggs, Johnson Road, sixty-one. I, just to follow up on Mark's comments, because I wasn't, I wasn't quite following from your comments as chairman that you weren't familiar with a state statute. But in fact, it's a state statute that limits on what you can actually put in the regulations and what have to be in reg amendments. So I'm, I'm just clarifying for sure that you're all aware of eight dash two, which says, this is what you have to consider if you do a reg amendment. And, and that it has to be consistent with the plan of conservation and development and in accordance with a comprehensive plan. So, and all those other points that I read, those, those had to have been considered when the original regulation was adopted, which I never did see that in the minutes at all. But it certainly is supposed to be considered by the board. And it is our belief as the members of the public, we have firsthand seen how it's being applied, that the reg amendment we're proposing absolutely would comply with eight dash two. And leaving it in place leaves our regs less than compliant with what the intent of eight dash two was. Thank you.
You're suggesting that we may or may not be aware of what our legal charge is. I think the, my comment had to do with, I don't memorize all of the Connecticut General Statute numbers and associate them with a specific responsibility that we have. And when it is just a reference to the statute number and no reference in a conversation whatsoever to the content of that statute, then it's hard to connect those. And so my question was to clarify that.
Thank you. Like I said, I had already referenced it and quoted it, so I assumed you knew that's what he was referring to, because that's the only statute we've been talking about. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes. Just, just one quick comment. I did not realize that the minutes from the previous meeting would be part of it. So I certainly would take a look at it and I'm assuming that I would have an opportunity to adjust that and continue.
I, you, I would, I'm assuming right now, and I think you'll find the cases, that the commission will continue this public hearing because of entering in reference to another, minutes from another session or meeting, I would want a chance for the commission to review it and the public to review it. So you want to concur, I think that's universal perspective from the commission.
But yeah. We have someone at truthracy@yaku.com. Who has her hand up?
Okay.
Yes, Ruth Tracy. I just want to say that you have a very.
Ms. Ms. Tracy, your address?
Ruth Tracy at eighty-eight Johnson Road.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say that although this regulation follows your protocols, and it doesn't seem to upset everybody in the town, it is upsetting people in this area of the town because it allows a business to be put in our residential neighborhood where the residents don't want it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have a comment.
Sure.
On the testimony we just heard from a gentleman in the back room, the attorney, speaking of, of the consideration of having a venue to increase the tax base, the comment I'm reading is that it's not our charge and not really something that we should be considering.
Again, I guess we all understand that, and that probably had no bearing whatsoever on us adopting the regulation, but.
I understand that, but you didn't mention that as part of his testimony. I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Also, we have Mike McGoldy with his hand still up and Heather Connors with her hand still up. Did any of them have additional comments?
Yep. So this is Mike McGoldy and Donna Mitchum McGoldy, thirty-three Gollum Road. Again, I was going to make a comment regarding the argument of increased revenue from the event. Obviously, we're hearing that it's not supposed to be a factor, that's to be considered. But I would also argue that it will actually, I think, cost the town money having that, whatever revenue it might generate from what we hear as the limit on the number of events compared to the impact on property values, which will lead to a reduction in taxes from residents. Plus, again, the emergency responses, you know, fire trucks get called out to accidents. There's a cost associated with that in emergency responses, that it would actually cost the town money to have something like this. There, I've sat on meetings where there's been a discussion of how much of our commercial areas that are identified go underutilized and would, would, I think, think that that would be an area in need of focus rather than generating new ones in new parts of the town where people reside. And I heard points about consistent with the character of the neighborhood, which I disagree with, but I did not hear references regarding, I don't see, again, how it promotes and helps traffic, how it helps general safety and welfare. The points that I outlined, I certainly wouldn't expect anyone to memorize the Connecticut General Statute, but I was citing each one and giving examples of how the reg amendment would bring things in alignment with Connecticut General Statute in each point. So I just appreciate the opportunity to, you know, to present that. So I just appreciate the opportunity to, you know, to present that. I hope people will look at that and, you know, look at those elements, because I think they're very important. Things to consider when making the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
We have Heather Connors.
Heather Connors, eighty two Cards Mill Road. I just wanted to comment because I heard the gentleman representing the big White House LLC reference that those of us speaking tonight are just stating our opinions and that our opinion should not be used as evidence towards the board. And I would just like to point out the fact that the board is made up of elected officials who represent us as residents of Columbia. And I feel very strongly that as a resident of Columbia, my opinion does matter and that the board should be listening to the residents and their opinions and taking those into consideration when they are making their decisions. So again, while we are stating, you know, and also, I'm sorry, but I live here. I've been here every day. Like, I raise my children here. So to say that they're just opinions and that, you know, we don't have any. I'm not going to hire an expert to tell you what I see out my window every day. Like, you know, our thoughts and our opinions about the town that we live in and that we raise our children in do matter. That's everything. Sorry.
Thank you. No, thank you for your testimony. We want to listen to everybody. John, did you have something?
I just have a couple of comments that I'll wait till the public and the commissioner are done. I don't want to step on anybody's toes.
Anyone else from the public who has a comment or question?
Does Ruth Tracy have her hand up again?
I don't believe so. Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to our town planner, to John, at this point. And we will, the next step after that will be to continue this public hearing to the twenty seventh, correct?
Correct. So I just wanted to ground the discussion a little bit on the difference between prohibiting something and regulating it by a special permit. Granted, I'm coming into this, you know, more than a year into the process, so I wasn't around when either the event wedding venue facilities was drafted and approved, nor was I around when this proposed repeal was originally rejected by this commission. But it seems to me as a planning professional, as a relatively newcomer to this process, the regulation that was put in place allowing for the possibility of event wedding venue facilities, that regulation is actually working quite well because it opens up a special permit process, which demands a public hearing, which demands public input, which demands notification of neighbors and signage, and requires the commission to ask many rigorous questions whether does this specific proposed use, which we allow for the possibility of in town, does it fit at this particular proposed location? Will it create traffic problems? Will it create public health and safety problems? Those are the questions that you are meant to ask. And it is quite clear to me from last, the public hearing two weeks ago and the public hearing this evening, that the public has been well informed and has been given ample opportunity to speak to the merits of a particular application. So unless you, as a commission, wish to reverse yourself and claim that there is no possibility under any circumstances in any part of town where an event wedding venue facility could satisfy the very high standards that you have set for yourself under section fifty two point seven point five, then this regulation should remain as, because it is working and that was your judgment. And nothing substantial has changed to force you to reverse your judgment on this matter. And I brought up on the screen section twenty one point two point three, which are permitted uses by a special permit approval by the commission in the residential district. And there are fifteen others. Some are quite commercial. Daycare centers, parks, playgrounds, golf courses, summer camps and day camps, bed and breakfast, commercial horse operations, indoor riding arenas. These are all commercial uses that are allowable, again, under certain circumstances, following a public hearing process in the residential district. They have been on the books for years or decades, some of them, and all they do is ensure the process that it's it's absolutely correct that these uses, including event wedding venues, are not appropriate everywhere in the residential district. But their potential in this subsection allows you, the commission, to have the judgment following such a process to determine whether it's appropriate in any given specific set of circumstances. So again, the fact that this regulation is on the books does not mean a free for all. And I think everyone has seen in the last weeks and months that it was not a slam dunk. It is not a guaranteed thing. It is demands a process, a rigorous process. And I don't think that this commission was mistaken when it approved the regulation in the first place by subjecting this possible use to happen sometime in town under the right circumstances. So I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, I'll make the motion that we continue this public hearing to January twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh, so that'll be the same.
February.
February. February. And that will be the same day that we are continuing the hearing venue itself.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I second it. Any discussion? Those in favor? Okay, Sarah, continue in the public hearing?
Obviously, we were going to wind this up tonight, so.
Okay, so against continuing the public hearing?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Is that unanimous? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. So item six point three. Of our rate, so there will be no actions on six point one, six point two, item six point three.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You did close the public hearing, I believe, for six point one. You could act on it, I believe.
Yes.
Six point one is a solar.
Oh, the solar, I'm sorry. Thank you. Under the solar, under new business, six point one. What's the pleasure of the commission? I think that this is a wonderful clarifying amendment. I didn't, I questioned whether it was needed at all, but I think it makes crystal clear that what our intentions were, and remove the word fun, but you can remove the word fun. That wasn't in there, it wasn't in there. Yeah, I just to address the changes requested, you know, if we feel we need to address that at a later time, let's open that up during, you know, an amendment cleanup time, a regulation cleanup period. So I would make a motion that we approve the amendment to the regulations as presented, as I, in discussion. Those in favor? That looks unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate all the comments. Six point three, if we add it to the agenda list.
That is the discussion of the date of the seventy nine Cardinal Room.
So that being said, I'll make a motion that we what did we receive from the attorney for the applicant for that? Is it just a verbal confirmation?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, let's wait for written confirmation and keep this scheduled for the thirteenth. But.
I could think you said you wanted, yes, to do a document, yes.
Yeah, you need to confirm that. Rich, our town, Rich Roberts, Mr. Roberts. Would it be appropriate to make a motion to continue the public hearing contingent upon receiving the written authorization from the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Good question. That's, that could be same night we're doing both of these. That could be a very long night for two big public hearings based on how these have gone. Is that anything we should consider? I'm just asking the question.
What's the commission's perspective on that?
Let's do it.
I'd like to get these things resolved. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
So if we can resolve, let's just stay with the one date and not come out. Yeah, I would be in favor of addressing them. Yeah, good point, but.
Nice try.
Hopefully, hopefully, all the things that need to be said have been said at this point. And it's a matter of working through the process at that point, but I won't assume that, but that's my hope. So I make a motion that we continue that the public hearing to the twenty seventh of of February.
Pending written notification.
Pending, pending receipt notification. Otherwise, we will continue. The public hearing will continue only to our next meeting, which is the thirteenth. Which, well, it's to a special meeting that was designated for that day. So we changed it from a regularly scheduled meeting to a special meeting, which is allowed on the holiday. Keeping with the request of a member of our community for the honor of that request.
That was, that was a motion.
Yes, that was a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? We clear? So.
So nothing on the thirteenth.
Nothing on the thirteenth. We're going to continue the public hearing to the twenty seventh, pending receipt of the extension right of the applicant. If we don't receive that, then we are going to have our special meeting on the thirteenth. Okay, but I assume we'll have that and we'll have our town planner follow up to make sure that we've received that. Okay.
Motion on the table, Rick?
Pardon me?
Motion on the table to be voted on.
Yes, all those in favor? Both? You're opposed to continuing it, Bob?
No, I voted for it.
Okay, thank you. There might be some lag in internet connection where you are. You're, you were in favor of it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure.
Yeah.
So that's unanimous to continue the public hearing contingent on receiving the extension from the applicant. So that being said, Mr. Gustavski, so we need to officially designate you as our, as an additional zoning officer. You want to speak to this? You had asked us.
Yeah, so for the record, John Gustavski, you don't, you don't have to. But I am offering this, and I think it's probably a good idea. I'm going to share my screen very briefly. So Public Act twenty one twenty nine, which was a major change to the state's zoning enabling statutes and a couple of other regulations relative to land use. So this is section eight. I'm sorry, section, yeah, section eight of the Public Act twenty one twenty nine. I'm pointing out here, this is subsection two, if you can see that. Says, beginning January first, twenty twenty three, and annually thereafter, each person appointed as zoning enforcement officer shall obtain certification from the Connecticut Association of Zoning Enforcement Officers and maintain such certification for the duration of employment as zoning enforcement officer. I bring this up because you, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, are charged with enforcement of your own regulations or the appointment of a Z E O who will enforce your regulations. Your current Z E O, Connie Kieslak, who is an excellent Z E O, is, does not have CASIO certification at this point and is, in order for her to obtain it, it would be about a year and a half or two year process. She has indicated to me that she is likely to retire before such time as she would receive the CASIO certification. So whereas that certification isn't required to be in place as of January first, your Z E O needs to be in process of obtaining that certification. And it seems at this point that Connie may not be undertaking that process. So I believe that it is prudent for the Town Planning and Zoning Commission to designate an additional, while keeping Connie available as zoning enforcement officer and managing permit reviews, to appoint someone who is CASIO certified to handle, you know, complaints and enforcement actions where the certification would be necessary. And I have that certification. So I'm not looking to displace her, but I'm looking to make sure that the town does have a certified zoning enforcement officer on staff that can provide that statutory certification. So I would, I would just propose that the commission add me as an authorized zoning enforcement officer.
Any questions? So I'll make a motion that we. Does that affect his contract at all?
No.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Does that mean that Connie's hours are going to be staying the same?
Same.
And we'll be forwarding the enforcement part to our gentleman, or she's just going to handle, he's just putting it in place as a placeholder? Connie's going to still continue to do the work?
She'll do the administrative work and then we have somebody who can sign off legally if need be.
Right, if we, if, that's precisely right. Connie can do the reviews. If, but if we have a need to, you know, take legal action, essentially, my certification would be in place, that I could essentially be the signatory on those enforcement actions.
Okay, I was just asking because Connie's continuing to say that she was overloaded, so I didn't know if we're adding some extra hours or taking away.
Basically, she's operating under his license.
Where we need a certified individual to sign off, John would be able to do that. But we have to designate him to be able to do that.
Okay, that's all, that's just.
Just designate him to have the authority to sign off.
What we're actually doing.
No, it's a good question. I appreciate it.
Okay, great.
So I'll make a motion that.
Wait, just one question. I'm sorry. Was the certification not required then prior to January first point twenty three?
That is correct.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we designate John Gustavski as an additional zoning enforcement officer. Any discussion? All those in favor? No lag. Bob, that's unanimous. Thank you. Let's pass over subdivision regulations for this evening. Is everyone okay with that? There's been no action taken by the subcommittee. There was a comment from our there was a request that we, when we do schedule meetings, that we put them on our next agenda, and I will do that. So when we have a subcommittee meeting, that there is legal notice of it because it is a public meeting and the public does have a right to sit in on our subcommittee discussions. And we will report back, not with formal full minutes of those meetings, but some sort of summary of what that discussion was. Next up, item nine, nine point one, Land Use Academy training is information in the packet. Take that home with you. Please make sure you sign up to take the three and a half hours that, that's three and a half hours, John, that's available to Land Use Academy?
That's four and a half hours. There are three sessions of an hour and a half each. And if Rich Roberts is still in the room.
Rich is.
He can, he can confirm. So these are, this, the, sort of the live broadcast of these are three consecutive Thursdays, February second, ninth, and sixteenth. However, Rich, can we confirm that Land Use Academy will be taping those and making them available essentially on demand following that?
Yep, that's the whole point. Okay, is to basically provide the required training. We switched around what had been the Land Use Academy curriculum to take out one section and put in the affordable and the fair housing to satisfy the specific one hour requirement for that. Actually, an hour and a half on that. And the other two basically get you over the top on all the rest of the hours. So the Connecticut Bar Association has done this as? No, you can't. You can't. Okay, so and taking notes, that four and a half hours of education would fulfill a requirement under the statute?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, and this is in lieu of potentially the Bar Association. Okay, so that's, um, and this is in lieu of potentially, uh, the, the, uh, Bar Association. Uh, presentation, uh, that's now, now being done virtually.
It's in addition to, so the C B A one has kind of more in-depth on specific topics. Um, the, the, uh, the video one is, uh. One of them is the same as a half-hour topic in the, uh, in the Wesleyan Bar Association program, expanded a little bit. Um, the other one, uh, aside from conflict of interest and the. Affordable housing is just basically how to run a meeting that, that's an hour and a half. Um, that kind of amplifies on one of the half-hour programs in the, in the full-day program. The full-day program includes, you know, specifics on planning, zoning, Z B A, weapons, enforcement, and so forth, so. Um. You know, it, it. Covers some of the same material in greater depth, and it doesn't cover a lot of the things that are in the full-day program.
I'm gonna ask, um, Josh and John, John, that we continually send, uh, notices out to the members of the commission about the training opportunities available. To be in conformance with the, the statute. Um, but in the Bar Association presentation is just phenomenal, has been in the past. I really have enjoyed that. What, does anyone know off the top of their head when the Bar Association present?
March eleventh.
March eleventh. Thank you for.
And that's virtual again.
Yeah, I, I plan to do that. So what, is it safe to assume that taking that three and a half hours and just attending the appropriate single, um. A Land Use Academy presentation would satisfy the four-hour requirement?
You may need to go into the full day.
Well, we're supposed to get four hours and the Bar Association presentation is only three and a half hours.
No, that's all day.
Oh, that's all day.
Well, it's, it's all, it's all day, but, um, it only covers a half an hour of the affordable housing. Um, so it, 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 the, the session is all day. Um, but in terms of counting for your statutory training requirement, it would be three and a half of the four hours.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so basically it's half-hour blocks all day long and there's only a half-hour.
So if we were to take, so, and the Land Use Academy has a half an hour.
Now, a half.
Hour and a half, so taking the, um, the Bar Association seminar and that, the one and a half hour of Land Use Academy would. I, let's just verify that that would accomplish the, um, the training. If somebody wanted to go through the Bar Association meeting. That, that was, I just, I've learned so much of that. It's been.
Yeah, that would work. You just somewhere during the course of the year have to pick up another half-hour of affordable housing.
And that's not being done at the Land Use Academy?
Yes, it is.
So, so that's where you might pick up that extra half hour by taking an hour and a half course there.
Right.
Okay, that's what it is. All right, thank you. Thank the Bar Association too. I love what they do there. Um. Next up, commission open discussion. Anything? Anyone? Anything under audience and citizens, I have eleven.
Yes.
Um, Carol Brooks, Johnson Road. I had made an inquiry of the town attorney. An admission about the procedures that are going to be followed with respect to the application for seventy-nine Cards Mill. And whether that was following under the, it's being treated as a second application and people will be allowed. To make comparisons to the prior application or not. And, and it would be helpful to know that before the twenty-seventh, so that if people are allowed to put in information that they had planned to. But weren't allowed at the public hearing.
We'll, we'll receive whatever information the public, I don't even try to go off, I'm sorry.
You, you did, but the point was, well, they were cut off at the last public hearing. So they weren't allowed to put in their information, and I'm not sure that they will be able to attend on the twenty-seventh, but. If they now know that there's an opportunity to put in information they wanted to, at least. They know they can make, get there if they can, whether virtually or in person. But it would be helpful to have that repeated before or brought, brought out before the public hearing. So that people know that they can do that and that they will plan to, they, they had planned to make comments they were cut, not allowed to make at the last public hearing. So the question is, are we gonna fix that and allow them to make those comments and let them know that ahead of time? So that when they come to the public hearing, the, the notes they had. They will have had a chance to think about and reflect what they wanted to put in that they weren't allowed to put in last time. That's my question.
I think we should allow people to submit whatever testimony they would like to.
I thought we got the testimony short because the public hearing is gonna be continued again. And that's why it was part of, we ran out of time.
That, that was part of it, John. But, uh, the idea that, uh, I felt that any information that should be considered by the commission. Is, uh, within the, the realm of the public hearing, it needs to be represented at the public hearing and. I, I stand by that, but if they want to reference information represented at the public hearing from the prior public hearing, I think we should be open. And if I made an error, I apologize, uh, but I don't think we should limit. Whatever information somebody wants to present, as long as it's relevant to the topic at hand. They're moving real.
I specifically would referencing the old, because I think that's what Carol's saying.
Yes.
Because if, it's part of the criteria, if, if that case comes in and has a second application for a similar pro, uh, project. It has to show some sort of difference from the original application. So naturally refer to the old application. I think that's some of the, well, the concern, so we can't really say, you can't talk about the old application.
Yeah, I don't, I, it, you know, if I, if that's what the result was, um, I don't remember my intent with what I said, and I'll be, just trying to be completely transparent. I think that we just need to consider whatever somebody wants to present at, in the public hearing.
John, I received a memo earlier today from Rich Roberts, which will be put in the packet.
Okay, yeah, I have that here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. So that being said, if somebody wants to reference, uh, what was from the, uh, what prior public hearing and, and reintroduce that information. I think we should all hear, so I agree. Yes.
Is, is the memo a public document at this point?
It's a legal memo, uh, from our council, so it's not public at this point.
Well, I believe.
It's going in a packet that's a public.
Well, I, I said that because I believe John Gustavski, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe he requested that I. Put it in the packet for the February twenty-seventh meeting, even though up to this point it was. A legal communication?
Yeah.
From our council.
I understand. Those aren't always, those aren't always, I'm asking the question. Not all attorney communications are.
I think we can answer the question.
Well, no, you haven't. Is it a public document?
I think that's all we're going to say this evening. I, I, I just responded.
Then Josh, I'm making my FOIA request for a copy of the memo, please.
I'm just looking back at my emails because I'm pretty sure that.
You respond during office hours.
Okay.
Uh, we have nothing for executive session. I'll make a motion. Those in favor?